Today is April twenty second. This is the regular meeting of Kings County Board of Superior. It is also what day is it today?
Birthday.
Birthday. Everybody needs to plant a tree. We'll start with roll call.
Isn't it true?
Joan Eves.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Deborah Boone.
Here.
Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Robert there.
Here. Okay, five members are here today, so we're doing good. At this time, I'll call for Kenneth Slack, who's not here. We'll go ahead and have Nate Ferri do the invocation. Go please rise.
Thank you, Nate. Diane, what's up?
Good morning. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we are grateful that we live in a free country where we can come before you and pray, Lord. And God, as we enter the spring season, we pray for refreshing on all of us in this room. And as we do the hard work to keep this county running, Lord, we just ask that you would bless all of us, bless this county, give us wisdom, Lord, and guide and direct our thoughts, our words, and our feet, Lord, as we go down the path to continue to grow this county. And Lord God, we just thank you again for your son, Jesus, and for all of the gifts you have given us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
At this time, we'll go to unscheduled appearances. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on any items of interest in the board jurisdiction and which are not already on the agenda. The board will not answer questions impromptu, and concerns or complaints will be referred to the appropriate staff. For items which are on the agenda, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the board, and each item is brought up for discussion. Speakers should limit their comments to no more than two minutes. And we'll take speaker card now. Do we have speaker cards?
We did not receive any speaker cards. We did not receive anything through BOS questions. And I believe Clarissa Adams is online to speak with her hand raised.
Do I see anybody? Any hands up?
Yeah, this is Clarissa Adams. I'm on the telephone.
Hi, Clarissa. You got two minutes.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Clarissa Adams. And up until February of this year, I was a deputy county council for Kings County. I'm speaking to you today to express my grave disappointment in my county's leadership. Either this board has been kept in the dark by administration and Luzzano Smith, or you willingly decided to decimate the county council's entire civil section. Effectively meaning all contracts, land agreements, PRAs, HR manners, including AI investigations and departmental and board advisement, are being farmed out to an outside law firm whose ultimate purpose is to make their goal hour goals. I'm horrified that the sheriff's office, i.e. files, are being exclusively held by an outside law firm where possible disclosure of highly sensitive and confidential information can occur. The law firm entered this county council's office stating to the entire staff that they were simply there while the board contemplated next steps. Immediately it was clear that was not the case. Quickly revoking remote work privileges from all those eligible, including all the legal secretaries and all but three of us newer attorneys, stating it was because they wanted to get to know us. That proved to be untrue, and requests for staff meetings were questioned and ignored. They eventually held one staff meeting since they became interim county council. Luzzano Smith has made it also clear that employees are not allowed to voice any concerns. In February of this year, I expressed frustration with their mandated processes, and within 24 hours, I was terminated. Since I was still in my probationary period, they called it, quote unquote, "released without reason", which occurred after an above-average performance review and Lori recommending a flex promotion to ER. Upon their arrival, Luzzano Smith quickly removed most of the duties of a newly hired council county for step five, allowing their attorneys to undermine and treat her poorly. It shouldn't surprise you that she was a former Luzzano Smith attorney. As she had a lot of integrity and not any work to do, she resigned at the end of January. After the strategic dismissal of two attorneys in the civil section, they continued to treat staff poorly by way of their office operations and policies, causing another civil attorney to seek work elsewhere. As a result, he resigned his position a week and a half ago. I would encourage this board to read his exit interview.
Thank you, Clarissa. Appreciate that. Anybody else online? Anybody in the audience? Okay, seeing them, we'll go to item three eighty. Report at a closed session from the regular agenda, April eighth, one point five.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There was nothing to report from that meeting.
Item B, approval of the minutes from regular meeting, April eighth, one point five. Moved by Superior Robinson, second by Superior Nev, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joan Eves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Deborah Boone.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert there.
Yes. Okay, five in favor. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead now, and we're going to go to consent counter. All items listed on the consent counter are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. If a board member has a question, request optional information, or wishes to comment on an item, the vote should not be taken until after questions have been addressed or comments made. And this public and the public has an opportunity to comment as well on the consent counter. What is your board's question?
Mr. Chairman, to request for item I, number four.
Okay, request to pull item I four.
Who to adopt the consent counter as minutes?
Second. Moved by Superior Nev, second by Superior Valley, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Before you call the roll, can you see if there's any questions from the public?
Do we have any questions from the public? Do we have anybody online that has a question on the consent counter? Seeing then, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joan Eves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Deborah Boone.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert there.
Yes. Five in favor. We'll go down to item I four and discuss that one separately.
We can move to vote. Presentation is not mentioned.
Okay. Now, a motion on I four.
So movement, Chair.
Moved by Superior Nev, second by Superior Fair, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joan Eves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
I've seen.
Deborah Boone.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert there.
Yes. Okay, we have four in favor, one that's fiction on item I four. Thank you. We'll move on now to regular consent counter, and we have item A, Community Development Agency. Noel, good morning, Noel.
Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors. Noel Tomlinson, Planner with the Community Development Agency. The Community Development Agency is beginning the county's comprehensive general plan update, which will include a development code update and environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA. The general plan shapes the future development of Kings County and is a crucial undertaking. The CDA issued a request for proposals on November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and three proposals were received. Quadnoff, Inc., Doing Business as QK, Precision Civil Engineering, and Minter Harnish. The county desires a consulting firm that has experience in public participation, understands rural communities and agricultural uses, is willing to provide translation services for public outreach, and recognizes the effects of the county's groundwater supply on economic stability. It is vital for the consultant to provide a legally defensible CEQA document and have local knowledge of and past working experience with Kings County. As outlined in the RFP, the scoring committee was formed, and QK received the highest overall score. The CDA requests the agreement with QK be approved. The approved budget for the update was one point nine million dollars, and QK's proposal was for one million, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars, well within the approved budget. The projected timeline is three years, beginning May first, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Staff recommends approving the agreement with Quadnoff, Inc., Doing Business as QK for the county's general plan and development code update effective May first, twenty twenty-five, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. And that concludes my presentation unless there are any questions. And we do have representatives here from QK as well.
Thank you, Noel. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Any comments from the QK in the audience? Can I get my side of my roads all done and the general plan and some parking and all that good stuff?
I'll talk to you later. Good morning. Steve Brandt with QK. I'm a principal planner, and I'll be the project manager for this project. Our team is really excited to be working for you on this project. We're going to get started in May with their staff, and we will kick off our public outreach efforts at the Kings County Fair in June. So come by our booth and say hi. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? I move.
No change orders.
We have motion by Superior Nev, second by Superior Valley, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joan Eves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Deborah Boone.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert there.
Yes. Okay, welcome. Looking forward to it. Looking for a lot of discussions. I know things change in time, so I know I talked to Chuck. We got some ideas coming about, so that's good.
Perfect.
Appreciate it. Okay, item B, regular calendar, Fire Department. Morning, Matt. How you doing today?
Good morning. Good morning, Board. Matt Sanfilippo, Kings County Fire Department. The Fire Department is requesting to continue a subscription with Emergency Software Management, ESO for data collection, inventory management, and record keeping. The Fire Department previously used the Emergency Reporting System, ERS, software to catalog and submit mandated fire reports to the National Fire Incident Reporting System, or otherwise known as NFRS, to track and maintain business inspection information and manage equipment inventory and testing data. ERS was bought by Emergency Software Management, ESO. On March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, at the request of the former fire chief, the county administrative officer signed an agreement to continue a twelve-month term from April of twenty twenty-four to April of twenty twenty-five, so services would continue. The subscription-based service is a necessary tool for data collection, analysis, inventory management, and record keeping. I should note at that time, we started the heavy lifting of moving all of that data from one software platform to another. And we just went live with ESO on April fifteenth of this year. ESO is the Fire Department software platform principally to record and input fire reports for their records and the national database. It is also the platform that records and catalogs the Fire Department inventory care and maintenance, inspections, and personnel. And in the last year, the department has sought other software platforms. And the department could not find a suitable replacement that covers the same important tasks, specifically the NFRS and national database synchronization. A request for proposal was not conducted, and a sole source justification was submitted to the county's purchasing manager on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, however, was ultimately rejected on the grounds that the Fire Department was already in contract with ESO. In addition, replacement or transition to a new system would require months of training and data transfer. The department has dedicated substantial hours in training transitioning database from ERS to ESO. The agreement has been reviewed and approved by county council as to form and by risk management for compliance with safety and liability standards. We recommend that the board approve the First Amendment with Emergency Software Management for data collection, inventory management, record keeping, security, and services retroactively effective from April thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, through April twelfth, twenty twenty-six. The annual subscription cost is nineteen thousand dollars, or nineteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. Sufficient funds have been included in the fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five adopted budget in budget unit two four one zero zero zero.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions from the board? I'm moving, Chair. Moved by Superior Nev, second by Superior Fair. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Was this open to the public?
Oh, almost. Geez. See, they moved my mic over here, so we'll take questions to the audience at this time. Seeing then, we'll take questions from the audience online. Seeing then, we'll go ahead and call for the roll.
Joan Eves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Deborah Boone.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert there.
Yes. Okay, five in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want to talk about the fire yesterday?
Sorry?
You want to talk about the fire yesterday?
Yeah, we had a, on the thirteenth, thirteen-hundred block of Tenth Avenue yesterday. We had a large fire that was actually a split property between Hanford City and Kings County. I think there was about thirteen acres burned, mostly old housing, dilapidated housing. It was an interesting property. There was a lot of houses that seemed like they had moved into the back and just sort of fallen over. But I'm sure many of you saw the column yesterday. It burned pretty good for about two and a half hours, and it was a combined effort between Hanford City and us. And it went on for about three or four hours.
That was unoccupied housing there, right?
Yeah, the first two to the south were unoccupied, but there was an occupied house to the north. And we were able to just stop the fire in the backyard so that it didn't get into the structure.
Yeah, I saw it from a long ways away. They said you could see it by sight.
Had a big header.
Oh, yeah.
I even drove out there and checked it out, but I couldn't get close to it.
Close the roads down. Yeah. Well, thanks. Nobody got hurt.
No.
You know, there was some discussion that some of them houses been there for thirty years. When Kathy and I were talking about it, I think it's probably closer to fifty.
Really?
I think some of those houses came from when they realigned one ninety-eight.
Well, they kind of look like they've been in the sixties. They kind of look like they've been empty since the thirties.
Correct.
Um.
You know, there were some older structures there.
I do have to point out that one of the wins was, as we got to the back of the property, we were able to put our dozer in there and actually stop the fire from going to the west. So having that equipment is amazing, and you guys let that happen for us, so.
Probably should have.
Really appreciate it.
I could have got the guy to pay us to put them all on a pile and keep them burning.
I think it cleaned up pretty good, didn't it?
Yeah, it did. It did. Yeah, fire does that.
Yeah, exactly. And kind of a reminder for weed abatement too, because everything is so dry and everything is such a fire hazard.
Yeah, we got real lucky. The wind was in our favor, right, going away from those.
Yeah, the fire was going straight up, so that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could have got worse, because that was a lot of weed out there. Everything was green and turned dead overnight, so.
Yeah.
It's important to keep your property clean.
Yep. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right, take care.
Hey, thank you. We were getting close to having Mary say something.
I know. That's how come my kind of.
Her mic turned red. I'm like. All right, the next item is item C, Human Services Agency. Good morning, Monica.
Yes, good morning, Chairman and members of the board. My name's Monica Connor, Assistant Director for the Human Services Agency and Vice Chair of the Child Abuse Prevention Coordinating Council, also known as CAPC. Thank you for the opportunity to present the important work CAPC has accomplished during the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. As service providers, we all share a common goal to protect children, support families, and build safer communities. CAPC is a space where we come together to do just that. CAPC brings together professionals from child welfare, behavioral health, education, public health, law enforcement, and community-based organizations to collaborate, coordinate, and align our prevention efforts. We work together to develop a county-wide prevention plan, share data and insights, and identify areas where services could be strengthened or gaps could be filled. The council also helps guide the use of prevention funding, ensuring dollars go towards programs that are effective and responsive to our community's needs. CAPC also plays a big role in community awareness and outreach, especially during Child Abuse Prevention Month, but also throughout the year. Educating and training opportunities are always present. At its heart, the council is about shared responsibility and collective impact. No one agency or organization can prevent child abuse on its own, but together, we can make a real difference. Our current board members are Chair Emery Marple, Argelia England, Judith Luna, Pearl Hernandez, Armando Puga, Lavina Nahera, Shawna Mayer, Amber Gates, Serena Martinez, Mary Halli Mendoza, and Tana Elizondo. Some of those folks are here today. As outlined in the CAPC operating bylaws, we are required to provide an annual report to the Board of Supervisors. This report highlights our key achievements from the current fiscal year and outlines our priorities for twenty-five, twenty-six. In partnership with Kings Partnership for Prevention, CAPC has prepared a brief presentation to highlight some of this year's accomplishments. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Jennifer Quinones from Kings Partnership, who will walk us through the slides. Do we have slides today? Okay, well, we're going to walk through some information for everyone to see or to hear. We're just going to go ahead and just present the information. That's my.
Thank you.
We have a copy of your presentation.
You do. Thank you.
Okay. Well, good morning. My name is Jennifer Quinones. I am a program coordinator with Kings Partnership. Just a little brief introduction, I'm actually a Fresno native and fairly new to Kings County, but definitely no stranger in doing meaningful community work and collaborating with agencies. With that being said, Kings Partnership is the, Kings Partnership, we are connected to provide communication and prevention education for Child Abuse Prevention Coordinating Council Board. So this report is to serve as an opportunity to update the board on CAPC's progress, accomplishments, and strategic priorities for the upcoming year. CAPC is dedicated to creating a safer, more supportive environment for children, families, in Kings County. This annual report not only fulfills CAPC's responsibilities outlined in the bylaws, but also ensures transparency. We celebrate success and inform the board for future plans. CAPC remains committed to protecting the children of Kings County and fostering a collaborative approach to prevention. So the CAPC administers special fundings to community-based grant programs to reduce abuse and neglect. CAPC is a multidisciplinary council managed through the Human Service Agency. Its goal is to reduce abuse and neglect by working with various agencies and community partners. So the scope of work for CAPC is we strengthen partnerships, recruit new board members, and foster key partnerships, ensuring a diverse network of stakeholders working together to prevent child abuse. We have data collection, which successfully collects and submits crucial data for the Office of Child Abuse Prevention, OCAP, report. It supports transparency and accountability in our work. We have our community engagement, where we lead impactful events such as Kids Day. We bring together families and community organizations to raise awareness and celebrate resilience. And then our education outreach, which expands our online presence to educate the public, create mandated reporter trainings to empower professionals to recognize and address abuse, and hosted the Lisa Project, which is an immersive experience to raise awareness about child abuse. And lastly, as our program delivery, through different contracts, we provide post-adoption services and parenting education. So CAPC, on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, we had Kids Day, which was a great success. Oh, there it is. We can go to the next slide, please. We had a great success last year for Kids Day with a hundred and forty-four children and a hundred and six adults. This year, we just had our Kids Day, which was April fifth, and that was also a great success. We had thirty-three vendors. We had two hundred and thirty-six people there. The event highlighted our community's dedication to promoting child well-being and safety. Activities focused on encouraging positive family interaction, raising awareness about child abuse prevention. We provided food and different activities for all the families. Next slide, please. Again, and then we are, here's a graph of our, for the Lisa Project, which is, the Lisa Project is a multisensory, interactive exhibit designed to educate the public about the child abuse prevention. We have a little bit of updated numbers. We conducted twenty-four Lisa Project tours, reaching a hundred and fifty-one participants. Additionally, we connected with three thousand, two hundred and one people through outreach events in Avonel, Kettleman City, Hanford, Lemoore, and Corcoran. And next, we will be reviewing the community-based grants that CAPC supports to help prevent child abuse and neglect. Next slide, please. Oh, yeah, here it. So here are some of the programs that support to help prevent abuse and neglect, which is a spare net. They provide crucial support to adoptive and guardianship families in Kings County. We have ITREACH, which acronyms are Resource Educate, Advocacy, Crisis Intervention, and Hope, which serves families awaiting adoption, newly placed children, or experienced adopters, accepts referrals from agency, reach consumers and self-referrals, offers trauma-informed parenting training, permanency resource, and case management, and focus on building stable, supportive families. Next slide, please. Last fiscal year, they served eighty-nine families at various stages of adoption. Next slide, please. Next, we have our Champions Parenting. Champions Parenting delivers programs designed to strengthen families and reduces the risk of relapse. These are the different types of education programs we have, which is celebrating families, nurturing parents, and nurturing fathers. Next slide, please. And last fiscal year, they served a hundred and thirteen parents and caregivers. Next slide, please. And lastly, we have Parents as Teachers, which is another program with two service providers in Kings County, which is First Five and KC AO. This supports Kings County families preventing child abuse and aiding young parents using the five protective factors, improves parenting practices and early childhood knowledge, detects developmental delays and health issues early, prevents child abuse and neglect, and enhances school readiness. Next slide, please. The last fiscal year, they served eighty-nine families successfully, eighty-nine families would successfully completed the program. Next slide, please. And some of our upcoming events, just a few of them that are up here. We just had a mandated reporter training, which was a great turnout. We have some mindfulness for family workshops, reunification celebration picnic, Kindness Rock Project, back-to-school event, and anti-bullying workshop for families in October. And also tonight, you can stop by the Civic Center. We are going to have the blue lights for child abuse prevention awareness between six PM and nine PM. And go ahead, next slide. Yeah, before we open up to questions, I also want to let you know that we would love for you all to stop by the Lisa Project. We schedule tours. I have an invitation card where you can book a tour, or we can connect through email. But yeah, so with that being said, is there any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Before we go into questions, I have a few more things to add. Thank you, Jennifer. Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. I'm Emery Marple, the Chairwoman for CAPC. I would like to review with you some additional efforts and progress CAPC has made this year alone. We continue to work with our new subcommittee entitled CEYC, which stands for Commercially Exploited Youth Coalition, with the objective of bringing awareness, provide local resources, and educate parents in efforts to help prevent commercially exploited youth in our area. We created a new website for Kings County's CAPC, which is now used as a resource to book a Lisa tour, to schedule mandated reporter training, post-upcoming events related to child abuse prevention in Kings County, and provide details on parenting programs we fund, as well as we're working to add resources related to our CEYC. As a board, we have grown and now have twelve active members, which is very important, in almost every category necessary to child abuse awareness as outlined in our bylaws. As we move into a new year, we have approved the addition of new quarterly activities with the objective of providing education on child abuse prevention in other cities in the county. We have also recently approved a new program, the Positive Parenting Program, partnering with North Star. The program is an evidence-based parenting program that aims to help parents build positive relationships, manage their children's. manage their children's behavior, and prevent problems from developing. The CAPC Board and myself are very dedicated to the preventative measures we provide our community, and we're very proud of our progress and impact thus far. Thank you, Chairman and members of the Board. We ask that you receive the overview and update of our annual report on the activities, accomplishments, and future priorities of the Child Abuse Prevention Coordinating Council, and we're happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions from the Board? Yes, a question and maybe a comment. So how long has CAPC been intact? Is
Well, it's been around for several years, and in looking at the bylaws, it goes back to we saw, we saw 77 somewhere. And so we're in the process of updating the bylaws. During COVID, our membership almost went away. So when we came back, we did some planning and figuring out, how can we get the team back together, the board back together, so that we could get it going again? And so we've been very fortunate that a lot of our partners have come together and said, I want to be a part of it. And so we're hoping that with these members, and if they stick around for a while, that we're going to be able to really carry all these activities through. So it's been around a while. It's just as active as it has been now.
No, right, and I say that because I'm having deja vu moments of my time at King, when I served with King's Partnership, that there became a marriage there at one point, kind of, between King's Partnership and the county. And it just, you see this fruitful blessing that's sitting here this morning, and just wanted to publicly acknowledge that. Thank you, guys, for your service and doing that, and best wishes in the future.
Thank you. Thank you.
For clarification, Chairman, the Board of Supervisors created that council on November 15, 1977.
Joe, remember that?
I was still in high school.
It was a great idea, by the way.
You know, that's why we keep Joe around. He had all these good ideas back in the 70s.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, I'll take 77. I was in eighth grade. Yeah, it wasn't on my, I was an abused child. Yeah. Do we have any other questions from the Board? Any questions from the audience?
Motion to accept the presentation.
Okay, motion to receive the
Supervisor Valley, Second Supervisor Nance, Battle Court, Call the Roll.
Joan Evans?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
All right. Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Robert there.
Yes.
Very good.
And to clarify, that was to adopt the resolution, correct? That's the next item. Okay. I didn't know if we were doing them separate. Thank you.
That's a resolution.
Yeah.
Accepted the presentation. So now we have Item Two. Consider adopting a resolution proclaiming the month of April 2025 as Child Abuse Preventative Month in Kings County.
Yes, good morning, again, Chairman, members of the Board. Monica Connor, Assistant Director for HSA. Each April continues, excuse me, each April, communities across the country come together to recognize Child Abuse Prevention Month, a time to raise awareness about the importance of strong families and supportive communities in keeping children safe and thriving. Here in Kings County, we remain committed to protecting our children and supporting families. In 2024, the Kings County Child Welfare Hotline received a total of 2,470 calls, each one reflecting a concern for a child's safety and well-being. Of those, 989 resulted in investigations. That means that over 1,400 calls did not meet the threshold for investigation, but each one still represented a moment when someone in our community, a mandated reporter, a neighbor, or someone who simply cared, saw something that gave them pause. These calls represent opportunities, opportunities for prevention, for outreach, and for education. This is where the work of the Child Abuse Prevention Council becomes so vital. By focusing on these moments before abuse or neglect rises to a level of intervention, CAPC and its partners can make a real difference through strengthening families, building resilience, and addressing concerns early. Child Abuse Prevention Month is not only a time to reflect, but also a time to take action. It's an opportunity to recognize the dedicated professionals, caregivers, educators, and community members who work tirelessly to create safer environments where children can grow, thrive, and reach their full potential. At this time, I'd like to invite Emery Marple, Chair of Kings County Child Abuse Prevention Council, to share more about the activities that have taken place in the month of April and to request the Board's support in adopting a resolution proclaiming April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Kings County.
Thank you, Monica. On the first Saturday of April, we hosted our annual Kids' Day. This year was another successful event partnering with local community resources to provide free activities for kids, resource information for child abuse prevention specifically, free food, games, giveaways every hour. Our CAPC specifically hosted yard games, hero cake making, face painting, Zumba cakewalk, along with very special balloon release. The week following Kids' Day is themed to promote the month itself, with each day being led by an activity on social media for engagement and spreading awareness. Pinwheels are posted in all major cities in the county as another reminder for Child Abuse Awareness Month. And we light up the local government agencies' blue again to help spread awareness. We are one of, we are one of the only counties that has a full LISA Project. We also know that we are in the search of a new location for LISA due to the county's remodel. It's a vital piece of our prevention efforts, and we extend the invitation to the Board of Supervisors to please take a tour of our LISA Project, in which KPFP will follow up to schedule a date with you. For these reasons, we respectfully ask the Board to adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month for Kings County. Thank you, Chairman and members of the Board, for taking the time to recognize the importance of this matter. We are very happy to answer any additional questions.
Just a comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have taken the tour, and it was impacting, because it goes through a bunch of individual case studies. So it just, it humanizes it. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I just echo that same thing. I've gone through there. It's like a the self-guided, kind of reminds me of touring Alcatraz, which will headphones on and walk through this, and it's, you know, don't take it for granted. It's an emotional, it's an emotional experience that it's very impactful. So just, if you haven't been, encourage you to do it.
Yeah, I think it's important. I define, spell, eat, build. It's very hairy. If you guys have a lot to deal with, and there's people out there living a couple of life. Okay, any questions, audience? Comment? Okay, I'll take it back to the Board.
So move it, Chair.
Second.
Joan Evans?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
All right.
Deborah Bin?
Here.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Robert there.
Yes.
I'm in favor. That's it. So I have a confirmation for the resolution here. Everybody down, picture?
We also have some, I'm sorry, we also have some pinwheels that we're gonna pass out as well.
A good pinwheel. Thank you. Thanks.
Hey, thank you very much. That was pretty cool. We'll go on now to Item D, Information Technology Department, and we have John Devlin.
I was always told never follow a child actor, somebody who handed out props, but I'll make it as good as I can. My name's John Devlin. I'm the Chief Information Officer for Kings County. The item before you is a Notice of Nonappropriation of Funds for the Print Shop. Central Services has ceased printing and scanning functions as of August 31, 2024. The budget has therefore been reduced for those functions. This Notice of Nonappropriation of Funds is required to cease payments for certain contracts that are no longer necessary. The fiscal impact in total is $153,370 in annual reduction in the Budget Unit 195400, Central Services, due to the cessation of services and reduction of physical space in the printing function of the department. The cost recovery estimates that are charged as internal service-funded departments were already adjusted by these changes in the fiscal year 2425 adopted budget. In interest of time, I will skip the background unless you'd like me to read that. And the recommendation is to approve the nonappropriation of funds for fiscal year 2526 and fiscal year 2627 for print shop functions.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board? Any questions from the audience? Any questions online? No hands raised? I'll bring it back to the Board for direction. So move. Move by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Nance, Battle Court, Call the Roll.
Joan Evans?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
All right.
Deborah Bin?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes. Okay, you got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on now to Public Health Department, and we have Rosemary. Good morning, Rosemary.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. Rosemarie, Department of Public Health. I'm before you today requesting approval of a termination amendment with Haluna Health. On May 16, 2023, the Kings County Department of Public Health entered into a subcontractor agreement with Haluna Health to provide epidemiology support through the provision of contracted epidemiologists, and as a part of the Epidemiology Laboratory Capacity Grant, known as ELC. Kings County initially received the ELC in advance funding beginning May 18, 2020, and then additional ELC expansion funding on January 15, 2021. All of this funding was from the Centers for Disease Control, which passed through California Department of Public Health and Haluna Health, who served as CDPH's fiduciary agency. The intention of the ELC grants was to expand COVID testing, surveillance, epidemiological evaluation, expand lab capacity to perform testing and tracking of COVID infections, cases, and community impact. Funding was also intended to reach populations in the community who had limited access to testing, screening, and vaccination services, as well as to improve health literacy and reduce infections from preventable diseases. The ELC funds were slated to end on June 30, 2026, the next fiscal year. On March 25, 2025, Haluna Health, as well as the California Department of Public Health, received written notification from the Center's Disease Control that effective March 24, 2025, they would be terminating all COVID-19 funding as the pandemic was over. The termination affects activities and costs incurred by the department. As a subrecipient of the funds, Haluna is requesting an agreement amendment for termination. The termination agreement, as well as other funds not related to the Haluna agreement, will bring to an end several initiatives and projects that provided community health services and impacted diverse populations in Kings County. The department had anticipated the ending of this funding and had already moved several staff positions into more stable funding streams, so no staff were impacted in the department. There were four active subcontractor recipients of the Haluna contract dollars impacted, Santa Rosa Rancheria, Kings United Way, ARIA Community Health Centers, President Metropolitan Ministries, who was about to subcontract with two Kings County CBOs, as well as ELC funds, which supported a variety of other department projects, such as wastewater testing and the department's electronic medical record system. All subcontractors of these funds were notified via email, then officially in writing of the ending of the funds and the notices from CDC, CDPH, and Haluna. All invoices have been submitted and services ended on 3/24. A temporary restraining order was in place and issued a pause to the termination of the COVID-19 funding through April 17, 2025. However, the department determined it was in the best interest in, based on the initial CDC timeframe, and was able to submit the invoices and close out in a timely manner. As a reference, the total dollars that KCDPH received for ELC and ELC expansion funding, the total of both grants totaled $10,756,684.57, and the expended amount of those dollars was $8,014,038.39. So that left a 66% expended and 34% unexpended. So I'm respectfully requesting the Board approve the termination amendment, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board?
Question, yes, sir. My name's Jim. So thanks for the presentation.
Yeah.
The, when, when we received these funds, we already knew there was a sunset.
Yeah.
These funds.
Actually, the sunset, we had thought was going to be in 2025, but they kept pushing it out further. So then the final was 26, June 30, and then this just came. It was a little sudden, but it came earlier.
Just for clar, clarification for the public. This isn't the county reacting to any fiscal issues or
No.
things that the county wants to get done here in the near future, and we're making cuts to help.
No, it was very much, this was COVID money. We knew it was going to sunset. We were trying to expend it as well as we could. And the intention even for the subcontractors was, this year was to find sustainable funding to go forward, because we knew this was not going to be.
Do you plan to put out a press release?
We haven't put out a press release, but we did notify most of our partners in writing.
Sure, I'd probably ask that we get a press release out with quotes related to specifically just clarifying that this was money that we already knew had an end date to it, and it's not something that the Board of Supervisors kept finding the hell, because I've seen on social media there's some comments going around.
Reception.
We're doing this so we can get a raise. Thank you.
Yeah, we can do that.
Very good. Any other questions? Yeah, I just, just one comment that, thank you first, because you said that locally, internally, with our employees, they're absorbed into other new positions. I had been an airshot of another county and another county supervisor that not so in the same kind of bucket that we are. And I think that they're scrambling. And so, you know, just kudos to foresight to see this coming and protect our employees through this process.
Fortunately, we were able, there was other additional money that was more stable, so we just started moving people in their last, actually, last fiscal year and this fiscal year.
Good job. Any question from the audience? Anybody online that has a comment or a question? I'll bring it back to the Board for direction. Move by Supervisor Nance, second by Supervisor there, Battle Court, Call the Roll.
Joan Evans?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
All right.
Deborah Bin?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Right there.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Rosemary.
Thank you.
Five in favor. We'll go on now to Board Member Announcements and Reports. Supervisor Robinson.
Mr. Chair, let's see, it's been a while, but Tuesday on April 8, I went to Armada Community Service Meeting. The ninth, well, actually, the 10th, Juvenile Justice Coordination Meeting. And then the 11th with several supervisors, went to Tachia Palace event for annexation. And then Tuesday, the 15th, company, the constituent to Human Resources, to, to, he was just looking for job applications, so just gave him some direction. And then on the 17th, attended the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District meeting.
Good. Ledger, Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wednesday, the 9th, attended the check presentation along with yourself. There at Adventist Health in Corcoran for an expansion of services. Thursday, the 10th, I want to thank District Attorney Sarah Hacker for the invite to the unveiling of the quilt, the victim witness ceremony. I told her after that ceremony that in my 17 years here, I never attended that ceremony, but I want to go every year now, because
Very somber.
Oh, yeah. Now I was touching, I didn't know it was like that. I guess I did. Never took the time to understand it, but now that I do, I see how important that, attending that ceremony is. And so I appreciate the invite out there and everyone who worked to put that together. Friday, the 11th, attended the ceremony out of Tachi, at Hotel Casino. Um, uh, at, at Hotel Casino, uh, the Land of Trust Ceremony, uh, historic uh signing by Chief Leo Sisco uh there. And I also want to congratulate him on his reelection to uh Chairman of the Tachi Oka Tribe that occurred on a Wednesday. Um, and Wednesday, the sixteenth, I was in Avenal. Uh, they had a grand opening of a Century Park there for special needs kids. A lot of autistic um uh children uh there in the community. And so, good job by the city councilman Vertigo uh is here. Good job, Councilman. That's uh, the park is beautiful, uh, brand new, and uh half the community was out there uh that afternoon, and once they cut the ribbon, the kids stormed the uh, the park.
Where's the park at, like Floyd Rice?
It's uh, it's right behind the um, uh, the boxing uh club, the, the Powell Building. The south of right there, should get an opportunity, check it out. If you know folks in the community, that's a good uh part to it. Take a special needs children.
Very good. What's there?
Uh, just wrapping up. Uh, and uh, now I know we want to hurry, because after this, many of us have gone to Sacramento for C S A C. So I'll be um joining everyone there for the next two days. Next week is one, let you know I'll be absent. It's a Miami reunion of uh my uh unit, uh, Marine Corps uh units are going to be uh gone for a couple of days there, so.
Very good. Good luck there.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, on the eleventh of April, it's been, I guess, a couple of weeks since we've met. Um, attended our, our virtual S two J two, our four county region meeting with uh Natural Resources or the Department of Conservation Secretary Crowfoot and Agricultural Secretary Ross on um, on uh this twenty nine billion dollars of job revenue, I guess, I don't know what else to say. Coming into this county, we meet with them actually this week up at C S A C, so we'll be up there this week for a second meeting. Um, also on the fifteenth, um, met with the constituent about a roadway, roadway repair. Um, and then that same evening, um, along with Supervisor Neves, um, my wife and I attended the Seroptimus Live Your Dreams Award banquet, um, pretty neat event to watch um several women um from a whole variety of different walks of life uh receive well due acknowledgement on the, on just their impact on this life and, and, and receiving uh um, some funding for, to, to continue their education. Uh, that was a well attended event. Then on Thursday, um, I attended uh interesting Silicon Valley Clean Energy. Um, it's a J P A. I, I, I'm going to tell you this has, as I understand this to be, because I'm really, really interested in, in this, and I don't know if this ties back to this S two J two thing that, that, that may or may not take place in the, in our county in a later date, but anyway, uh, my understanding of this is that there's eleven cities and one county that are represented in this um, in this S V C E out of Silicon Valley that put a hundred and thirty one megawatt lithium ion battery storage out here in industrial park area. Um, and, and so there were several council members from the Silicon Valley that were here, and, and so I just started asking questions like, what is this and how does? And it was like drinking water from a fire hydrant. I'm just going to say it as I understand it to be that these, this, these cities that within this county um, work this together to form a J P A. They, they created a revenue stream out of this back into their local governments. Um, and it's just something that, that, that popped up on my radar, and then to me, I'm looking at this S two J two and just something that, that maybe this county should consider um looking at. I know I'm probably babbling about it, but it was, it was a, it was a pretty uh um eye opening event. Congressman Valadeo was there as well. Um, so sat and had lunch with him. Um, also on Thursday, the seventeenth, attended the King's Commission on Aging. And then lastly, just, just in closing this, um, many of you here in this room, maybe um online, um saddened to hear the passing of, of our Ms. Kings County, um, Emily Carpenter. Um, I met her. She's nineteen years old. Um, um, I met her at the Thursday Night Marketplace last year. My wife and I did walking through. Um, obviously, she looked, she appeared to have cancer. She was still under treatment. And so I told her, I was like, hey, well, you know, here coming up is Pink Patch Month at the Sheriff's Office. I'm going to wear my pink patches and you know, on your behalf, and she immediately schooled me and educated me that pink does not represent childhood cancer. And there in the grounds at the Civic Auditorium, um, this young lady gave me an education that's, that, that uh um was just, just absolute blessing to have known her and to met her, but at that time, um, she was, she was talking about like the, within a few days, she was going to Washington, D.C. to march the Capitol, and it was like, well, have you met with her? Do you know your congressman? Do you? And she had no idea who her congressman was. Anyway, I, I hooked her up with David Valadeo, and a few days later, she had a picture with Congressman Valadeo in her office and um, just, just a sweet precious soul and a loss to our community and, and just wanted to acknowledge that publicly, that, that Emily Carpenter and her family, just keep, keep them in your thoughts and your
What is the color of childhood cancer?
Gold and black.
Black. Okay. I don't, uh, pink is breast cancer.
Pink is breast cancer, and the, the interesting piece of it, and I don't want to butcher the, the um, the dollar amounts, but I believe Emily said that that of all of the cancer research, like less than eight percent of it goes to childhood cancer. Um, obviously, pink patch breast cancer gets the lion's share of it, but um, you know, you have a nineteen year old just shooting the fire hose of information that you made me, made me feel silly, because I didn't, I mean, I didn't know. I don't know if anybody else in here knew that or not, that gold and black is for childhood cancer and um, and, and, and with Emily, and, and my understanding too is that she, she's, she's battled this for ten or eleven years through three, three separate and distinct different types of cancer, and it could have been that this last one, the fourth one is what, is what claimed her life, but um, just, just a resilient um young lady that, that, that was super, super happy to see her win this Kings County and, and represent uh, you know, this, this, this entire county as a whole. Um, at least, at least for the few months that, that she wore that sash, so super proud of her. That's
Maybe, maybe we should do an Emily Carpenter Day in the future.
I think.
Promote that.
I'm glad you said that. I was, that, that would, I think that would be pretty cool.
Okay, all right. We'll look at staff look into it and get back to us, and maybe a year from the passing, we can do a remembrance from here on out.
And, and childhood cancer.
Very good. Thank you.
Golden positivity, I think, is the name of her nonprofit, Golden Positivity. Emily's shaking her head. Am I getting it right? Yeah. So that was, that was her nonprofit, her little organization that she showed up, that she started up here to help educate, so.
Very good. Supervisor Neves.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. April eighth, the barbecue committee get together. Uh, May sixth is the uh employee appreciation, so uh mark your calendars and get your uh aprons ready. Uh, the April eighth event in Corcoran, the Boswell Foundation goes to help dialysis and three D um imaging, uh, two very important uh aspects of health, uh, bringing that to, to Corcoran. Uh, the tenth, uh, we got together one more time with the Santa Rosa Rancheria, talking about the new fire station. Also attended the uh Kerr Center uh Endoscope uh technology uh that is bringing a, a, um, exceptional quality uh to Kings County uh through Adventist Health uh at the Kerr Center. The uh, uh National Crimes Victims Rights uh Week uh was at the Coin and the Learning Center, very well attended. Uh, the Feed to Trust Ceremony at, at Santa Rosa Rancheria is one of those things that you don't uh get too many times in your career. Uh, eight hundred and forty acres going into trust, expanding the um Santa Rosa Rancheria. Continuing to announce softball at Lamoore High. Kathy and I attended the dinner and all that jazz uh at the Lamoore Trinity Hall on the eleventh, the wonderful night helping uh Lamoore High School uh jazz band programs. On the twelfth, we cooked hot dogs for the uh Stratford Easter Egg Hunt. Um, Kathy and I attended the Nights at Columbus uh Palm Sunday Breakfast. Robert talked about the Live Your Dream um Awards Dinner uh, and then the LAFCO meeting uh was held on the sixteenth, the special meeting uh annexing in some, some uh property uh, uh into the city of Hanford. Um, on the seventeenth, uh, we uh cooked pancakes and bacon and eggs, uh Santa Rosa Rancheria Easter brunch, and uh even got to feed the uh Easter Bunny. Uh, special thanks to Richard Fagundes, Jim Kilner, Greg Martella, helping out with those events. Uh, South Fork Kings Meeting was canceled due to action, uh, no action items. Uh, Kings County Health Advisory, uh, uh Equity Advisory Panel is, was also canceled, and then yesterday, uh, Kings County Homeless Collaborative uh held a meeting and got all the updates on the projects and, and reports and updates, and I think we'll have some update uh next week about some ribbon fittings. So um with that, thank you very much.
So does Easter Bunny and the Santa Claus, you guys have special events you guys go to, just for, you know?
I, I was looking for the Sandman, to be honest with you. Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you. Uh, only thing I can add to that is I went to the Regional Policy Council uh event in Merced College and uh over two and a half days and had a good event there, so um, along with the, the check presentation from Boswell Corporation or Boswell Family to Adventist Health. And one thing, I, I was hoping to see a little bit more publicity on that. That was the largest donation in history to Adventist Health from our local farmer, and we got nothing media wise from that. And I don't know if that Boswell requested that.
Yeah.
But um they didn't say we couldn't say anything about it, but that's, that's a big deal for a small, one of the smallest counties in the state of California and have a large farming operation donate the largest, and then Adventist Health, the state of California, right?
Right. Oh, yeah.
Western state. That's the largest donation, so it's important to keep water here, keep farming strong and, and move forward in our future and, and make sure we protect our natural resources, so that shows you what you can do.
And, and that dialysis center is going to be big, because those folks were having to come all the way into Hanford for services, and so dialysis is very, very important to folks that need that dialysis treatment.
It's twenty five mobile units? Or it's going to be under the rooftop?
I, I think it's under the rooftop. Yeah, I don't think they're moving. They have the infusion units, but the, this is going to be full dialysis.
The uh breast cancer screening is a mobile unit, right?
Correct. That one's a little more mobile, but that with three D imaging is pretty amazing. I think the closest one is
Yeah, mammogram is pet screening, no wonder.
Mobile unit, definitely.
But it'll be parked at the station there, but it's, it'll go to Larry County, I think.
Correct.
Okay, we'll go on now to Board Correspondents.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the board received an invitation on April eighth from Chem Waste Management uh regarding the Facility Tenth Annual Information Meeting, which will take place April twenty ninth at the Kettleman City Elementary School Cafeteria. For upcoming events, Kings County Behavioral Health will host its Veterans Support Group tonight from five thirty to seven thirty at the Veterans Memorial Hall in Hanford. Kings County Library will host its Family Game Time at Stratford Branch Library tomorrow from two to four P M., and Kings County will host a blood drive in memory of Fire Captain Mark Eads on May fifteenth from nine to one P M. Here on campus, located closer to the old Sheriff's Office, will walk ups are welcome, or you can register online. Additionally, the Echoes of Courage Parade um is taking place on April twenty sixth. They will have a parade downtowns, downtown Hanford at ten A M. With a cer- ceremony at eleven A M., there will be a car show, beer garden and food trucks. For upcoming agenda items, the agenda items are for next week. Administration has six items, some Construction Management Services Agreement, Res- Resolution Proclaiming, Public Service Recognition Week, Claim for Damages, a few uh support letters on some bills and opposition letter on a bill, health insurance renewal for next fiscal year. The Assessor Clerk Recorder has one item regarding a salary adjustment. Behavioral Health has two items on Resolution Proclaiming twenty twenty five. May twenty twenty five as Mental Health Awareness and Maternal Mental Health Month uh in an agreement with the Authority for Statewide Prevention and Early Intervention Program. Health has a First Amendment to a software agreement. H R has an item regarding some uh Finance Department reclassifications. H S A has an item on the Sunrise Apartment Ownership Transfer Documents um agreement and loan resolution. Library has one item on a property lease agreement for a proper temporary Hanford site location. Public Work has um an item on a, a form of zone of benefit on partial tax for road improvement. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. What day is Mark Eads' Blood Drive again?
That will take place May fifteenth.
May fifteenth, okay.
And then uh follow up on the food trucks on the fifteenth?
So yes, our next, our uh food truck, mobile food truck vendors for county employees was successful last week. We did have three vendors on site. Uh, that will take place the third Tuesday of every month. So um however, as we get more vendors, we will start doing that more frequently than the once a month.
And it was success, right? It was good?
The pictures looked, there was a lot of employees who lined up. I think I even saw Scott out there getting some food. Someone snapped some pictures of him, so it seemed like it was uh a good turnout from the employees.
So Scott, it was a good deal, you think? Good deal.
I did speak to one of the vendors that they said, I asked them how they did with, you know, sales, and they said they doubled what they anticipated to do.
For a hundred, hundred groups. Eat our food. Okay, at this time, we'll go to closed session as outlined by council.
Thank you. Item one, personnel matter, Government Code Section five four nine five seven. Public Employee Appointment Title Fire Chief. Personnel Matter Government Code Section five four nine five seven. Public Employee Evaluation Title Interim County Counsel. Personnel Matter Government Code Section five four nine five seven. Public Employee Evaluation Title Director of Behavioral Health. Conference with Labor Negotiators Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six. Negotiators Kyria Martinez, Carolyn Lees, Jay Johnson of Liebert Cassidy Whitmore. General Unit Clocia, Supervisors Unit Clocia, Blue Collar, S C I U. Detention Deputies Association, Firefighters Association, Deputy Sheriff's Association, Probation Officers Association, Prosecutors Association, Unrepresented Management. Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation One Case. Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Paragraph Two or Three of Subdivision D of Section five four nine five six point nine of the Government Code. Government Code Section five four nine five six point ninety two. Conference with Real Property Negotiator Government Code Section five four nine five six point eight. Property A P N zero four two one zero 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 nine seven zero zero zero. Agency Negotiator Kyria Martinez, C A O. Negotiation Parties Kings County, Kettleman City Foundation and Reef Sunset Unified School District under negotiation price and terms, and I'll turn it back over to the chair for any public comment.
Thank you very much. Any public comments at this time? Anybody online? We are adjourned until next Tuesday. Thank you very much.